Good evening, I'm going to call the regular council, public hearing meeting to order, and just ask for a variation in the agenda if I could get approval to bring forward two corporate reports. One is a sustainability update, R 026, and then R 027 on Innovation Boulevard. So after we do the adoption of the minutes, we'll bring those forward if I may have a motion to amend the agenda.
Second.
And R 035, bring that also forward, which is the biofuel processing plant, so that staff can speak to that and then be on their way. Adoption of minutes, regular council, February 2nd.
I'll move the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move council and committee, February 2nd.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the minutes to February 2nd.
Second.
Regular land use.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move minutes be received, finance committee, February 2nd.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move recommendations be adopted.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
All the minutes of public hearing, February 2nd be adopted?
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. And now R 026, which is the report on the sustainability charter update.
Move recommendations.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. R 027, Innovation Boulevard, and I believe we have a presentation for Innovation Boulevard from our manager of economic development. Shall we hold, we'll hold until after the presentation, please. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. Happy to give a present, a update regarding some progress on Innovation Boulevard, and for the benefit of the new councilors on council, I'll provide a little bit of background information as well. So, what is Innovation Boulevard? We've come up with a, we tried to put it in a sentence, and this is as close as we got to the reality, which is a very big and complex reality. So, we say it's an agile partnership of health, business, and higher education, and government creating new health technologies to improve people's lives. So, it's a unique model, it's attracting a lot of attention locally and actually now around the world, and it was launched just shy of two years ago. So, we have founding partners, there are City of Surrey, SFU, and Fraser Health, but it's now guided by a very robust group of 50 regional partners. And I just want to say that Innovation Boulevard, I think that one of the strongest reasons for success is the fact that it is highly inclusive, and we help everyone find their place in Innovation Boulevard and find success in Innovation Boulevard. So, the goals of Innovation Boulevard, to improve patient care and outcomes, to reduce the burden on the healthcare system, to attract the best clinicians and researchers, and to bring companies and high-value jobs to Surrey. And how do we do this? We do this by providing access. We've created a very potent network of academic clinicians, labs, companies, funders, and we plug entrepreneurs with health technology ideas into this network. And this network's a very rich ecosystem of support, and it serves to jump-start ideas, accelerate the commercialization process, and get products to market faster. So, we have three focus areas. These are the areas in which we are developing health technology products: medical devices, independent living, and digital health. And new on the scene is mental health and addictions. And all of these focus areas were chosen very specifically for existing, we're capitalizing on existing strengths within the universities, within the hospital system, and within our partnership base. So, this is the area that we are focusing on. It is generally a one-square-mile area in the city center, and it's anchored by SFU and Fraser Health headquarters and City of Surrey to the north, and the Surrey Memorial Hospital campus, and Jim Patterson Outpatient Center to the south. And this is the geographic core of Innovation Boulevard, but the network itself extends across the region, across Canada, and now actually around the world. So, this asset map shows more clearly the partners that we have onboard, and it reflects the assets and the enablers that are part of our partnership of Innovation Boulevard. And we're now building embedded labs in this area, and these embedded labs will be the place where technologies are developed, and they're also the place where the technologies will be used. So, each has a specialty area that are, include brain technologies, digital health solutions, technologies for independent living, commercialization, prototyping, advanced medical imaging, and coming very soon, an embedded lab for mental health and addictions. Take a closer look at two of these sites. This is the city center one building, which is located directly across from Surrey Memorial Hospital, and this is where the innovation hub will be opening in April. It's 12,000 square feet of space, it's on the second floor, it's the prime space in that commercial building, and it's almost fully subscribed already, and it won't be opening till April. So, this is the place where companies and clinicians and researchers and industry will all converge, and this is where ideas will be taken from being an idea to being a commercial So, another very interesting embedded lab is at the Retirement Concepts Innovation Center. So, Retirement Concepts is the largest provider of care homes in B.C., and they're very entrepreneurial. They had an empty space, and they've invested close to a million dollars to change that space into an innovation center. So, now, when you see this space, rather than being empty, it is a beautiful, fresh-looking space that's alive, with clinicians and residents and researchers all working together to refine products and take them to market. It's the first-of-its-kind partnership in B.C., and it's attracting worldwide attention. Every single day, they're getting calls from cities around the world, from researchers around the world, from entrepreneurs around the world that want access to this innovation So, they're doing some pretty interesting projects there. They're doing things like refining lifting devices for home and for commercial use. They're developing wheelchair airbags, something sounds very simple, but it's also very practical and very much needed. Technologies to assist people with dementia, all sorts of technologies to assist people with dementia, and things that are very specific, like telemedicine systems for monitoring pressure ulcers in long-term care facilities, and also falls prevention and sensor technologies, all very practical, all very needed. So, Innovation Boulevard, less than two years old, and we've experienced a lot of success, more than we even expected. Just to run through a few of the early successes, the first technology was commercialized actually in less than one year, and that was Conker Mobile's surgery simulation app for iPad. We are currently engaged with 45 companies that are interested in locating an Innovation Boulevard, and that includes three multinationals. And we've created 30,000 square feet of embedded lab space, the labs that I just spoke about. It's a big number, $36.6 million in federal funding to SFU and Retirement Concepts Innovation Center for the Age Well program, and that is technology development to support older adults. And this is very important, because the more that older adults can be supported through technology at home, the less time they'll spend in a hospital, reduces hospital care costs, healthcare costs. Another big number up there, $500,000. Just last week, the John Vulcan Foundation agreed to contribute $500,000 over five years, which will match the city's contribution to creating an SFU chair in frontline innovations for youth, mental health, and addictions. That will be the center point of the embedded lab for mental health and addictions. And we've done lots of other things, lots of people have been coming out to hear about what's happening in Innovation Boulevard. But we've also struck some very strong collaborations internationally. We're working with Israel, we're working with India, and we're also working with France. They came to us in the summer of last year. There were a dozen senators from the Senate of France Economic Commission that had heard something interesting was happening in Metro Vancouver and found out it was in Surrey, and SFU facilitated a visit, and we now have an ongoing collaboration with this group. And we're also, Innovation Boulevard is also being held up as a model for health innovation by the Canadian Institutes of Health Research, which is a pretty big deal for a project that is less than two years old. So, on the horizon, lots of great things are going to be happening, some that seem relatively small, like the launch of a new website, and others that are very significant, like the launch of this Age Well program. And in addition to that, there are many company partnership and funding announcements that are being teed up right now, so there'll be a lot to talk about over the next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna, very much for your presentation. That's great work and enormous success in a very short period of time. The innovation, or the funding provided just last week by the Vulcan Foundation for Mental Health and Addictions, will that include expanded lab space as well?
Yes, absolutely. The Vulcan Foundation is opening their doors to us and are, they have a beautiful new wing in their property in the Newton area. So, this will in essence extend Innovation Boulevard right down to the Newton area, because they are saying, "We've got this space, we want to be directly involved," and we haven't defined how much space, but their minds are open.
So, we can redefine our map for that one-mile area down into the core of the Newton area as well. Great work. Anyone else? Counselor Hayne?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I just, I want to say congratulations to staff, Donna and your staff, for the work that you've put in on this. It's just absolutely tireless, and it's really so gratifying to start to see some of the results come so quickly. And when you think of an economic development strategy for any city, you can put your efforts into whatever area you like, whether it's into manufacturing, or whether it's into whatever you want as far as an economic development strategy. But when that strategy also attracts four universities with the educational opportunities that those bring, and it improves health outcomes for all our citizens, I mean, what a triple bottom line that is for an economic diversification strategy. So, congratulations to that. Innovation Boulevard is, as you've said, being held up all around the world as a leader in innovation already, and it's only a year and a half, two years old, so congratulations for that. Thank you.
Thanks, Donna. Now, I'll entertain a motion on R 027.
So, moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, opposed, carried. And finally, R 035 on the biofuel, the organic biofuel update on completion.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. That's another great project, which will be the first-of-its-kind in North America, an entire closed-loop process. So, thank you for all the work. I know that just landed on my desk this week to sign, and it was about four feet thick, so I know there's been a lot of work done on that, and I appreciate that going forward as well. Delegations are now into the public hearing part of our, oh, did you want to speak to that now, Counselor Hayne?
While Anna was here.
Well, okay, that would be great. Sure, absolutely. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and this goes back to our sustainability charter update, and it also speaks to our biofuel facility, so it's very timely.
It's timely.
Just a week ago, at the FCM Sustainable Communities Conference, the City of Surrey won, for the second year in a row, a Sustainable Communities Award, this time in our city energy program for our SEEP, our Community Energy and Emissions Plan. And I'm just going to put this up here. And Anna Matheson was at the conference, as was I, and she was speaking at the conference. And the city got recognized for our community, our SEEP, our Community Energy and Emissions Plan, which takes into account all these things that we've been talking about, the sustainability charter and its update, as well as our climate adaptation, climate mitigation strategies, with our greening of our fleet, our district energy program, the biofuel facility that we're, just had the corporate report on, our biodiversity conservation strategy, as well as diking systems, and so on. And it's being held up right across Canada by the FCM, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, as being best-in-class for municipalities all across Canada that are looking at community energy and emissions plans. So, it's a real testament to the work that our staff is doing all across many departments, but particularly in our sustainability office, and very pleased that we received that, and congratulations to staff.
Thank you, Counselor Hayne, and thank you to staff. That's fabulous. Now, we'll move into the public hearing portion of the agenda, and first delegation, first on the agenda, please, Madam Clerk.
Here's the official community plan amendment bylaw 18405 and zoning amendment bylaw 18406. The address is 1901954th Avenue. The applicant is Gordon Dams. The applicant is seeking to consolidate two properties in order to permit the development of a two-story industrial building by redesignating the property from suburban to industrial and rezoning the one-acre residential to light-impact industrial.
I have no one signed up to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this bylaw? First call, Deb, you're up.
Good evening. Deb Jacks, Surrey Environmental Partners. This is new.
I'd like to speak to this. Surrey Environmental Partners, care 7680143 Street, here in Surrey. The planning report indicates that the staff spoke to the applicant with regards to retaining a stand of mature, healthy conifers, and certainly the tree report indicates that there were 13 conifers, of which none are expected to be conserved. The applicant, in addition, while acknowledging the importance of the biodiversity conservation strategy, I take it emphasize to staff that the site had been planned prior to the acceptance of the BCS by council. I'm wondering if all attempts have been made in order to retain a stand of mature, healthy conifers. That's a great loss to the biodiversity of the city, it's a great loss to the whole issue of the tree canopy of the city. In addition, we're bringing up again the issue of green roofs, green walls, and the use of rainwater gardens whenever and wherever possible for institutional and commercial and industrial buildings. So, perhaps council could give some consideration to those items. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number one? First call, second call. Okay, sir, is there anyone else after this gentleman? You, sir, are the last speaker.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'm a resident in the area, and I was looking at the list of permitted uses for light-impact industrial rezoning, and my concern, or a few concerns, actually, would be the recycling depot, provided that it is confined to an enclosed building. Now, the only concern that I have with the recycling depot is what type of recycling it would be used for. Would it be like a bottle depot? The other concern that I have is automotive service uses. Recently, the roadway has been redone to allow for a bypass for trucking, and there is a stop sign going on to the new curve, and what that's allowed to do is individuals who are motorists who are going through east-westbound on 54 are actually not necessarily obeying the road lines, and they're actually cutting right across. And I've seen several vehicles speeding through there. And I understand that there's been speed bumps that have been approved to be installed in the area, but in that area over here, there seems to be a lot more traffic. The other concern would be driving schools and taxi dispatch offices, which I think would also make the issue worse when it comes to traffic in that area. And that's, those are the concerns that I have about rezoning that area, for those specific ones. The other ones I don't have any issues with, but the issues that I have are for more traffic with respect to vehicles, and a lot more people come in with materials that they want to recycle.
Recycle. Thank you. Okay, move on. Madam Clerk?
The next bylaw is zoning amendment bylaw 18407. The addresses are 5738 175th Street and 1755557A Street. The applicant is the City of Surrey. The applicant is seeking to amend the Comprehensive Development bylaw 17464 in order to permit the development of a four-story mixed-use building on a portion of the site.
I have no one signed up wishing to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this bylaw?
Deb Jacks, Surrey Environmental Partners, 7680143 Street, here in Surrey. Once again, on the issue of buildings that are commercial, industrial, retail, institutional, we would like to see green roofs, green walls, and wherever possible outside, the use of swales, rainwater gardens, in order to restore as much of the rainwater that falls on the buildings into the ground. Also notice on this proposed development that there will be a proposed reduction of outdoor amenity space by an amount of 1,722 square feet, or 160 square meters. That gives all the more importance to the whole issue of green roofs, green walls, et cetera, because there will be less green in the entire site.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number two? Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Mike Bola. I'm the president of the Cloverdale Community Association. First thing I want to say is that it's great to see that the site is moving ahead with some traction here, I guess you want to say. The association, the BIA, and the Cloverdale Chamber of Commerce have been pushing for this for a long time, and this is great to see, this is actually up for a public hearing today. I do have one concern, and it's with regards to parking. If the, I'm not sure, Madam Mayor, do you have a layout of the whole development, where this particular development's going to be going?
Did you want to put that up on the, can you put that up on the screen, Mr. Planner? Does that help, Mr. Bola?
Sort of, okay. Well, in the corporate planning, in the corporate report that I actually was looking on the website, 67, or is that 57A there, it actually shows that there's a, oops, okay, 57th Ave there. In the original layout, there was actually on-street parking indicated there, and that's no longer there, because I actually drove by there again today, and it actually reflects this particular map here, this diagram. So, I'm just wondering, with such limited commercial parking, which is 37 stalls, and we're going to be sharing 17 of the residential visitor parking spots, will there be a potential issue of parking here? You know, with these commercial units, the size of these commercial units are so small, you're going to see, you're going to start seeing doctors' offices, or dentists', or whatnot, and there are going to be a couple hours usage there. And in the actual, on the internet, this layout is not there, and again, to me, it's a bit concerning, the way this has been designed, there is, the on-street parking has been eliminated from the original plan.
Could you speak to the parking, clarify the parking issue, Mr. Planner? And its conformity to our bylaws?
Actually, Madam Mayor, I'd like to refer that to the engineer, please. Madam Mayor, at this point, the site plan does not indicate the on-street parking. I will need to go back and have a look at what the design drawings call for in terms of the parking along 57th Avenue.
For the purposes this evening, does this site conform to our planning, or to our parking requirements?
Madam Mayor, there are sufficient parking being required as part of this development for onsite parking.
On-site?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, Madam Mayor, I would like to clarify one thing, or make it known that there's actually 75 stalls are required for commercial parking, and the city's only providing 37. They're going to be using 17 of the visitor-shared parking. If some of those visitor-shared parking are used by the visitors attending those residents there, we've now gone well below the limit again. We already are below the limit, we're trying to say we're going to utilize some of the additional parking space onsite, but if that space is already used, we'll go from 54, which is what that adds up to, to say 25. What happens, where do we find additional parking? And I guess what I'm trying to say is, the original layout that showed the on-street parking would have been sufficient, it would have alleviated some of that parking problems.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
And the last comment, I wanted to just reiterate what Deb Jacks has said about the outdoor amenities. We need some greenery there, just don't want buildings everywhere there, and shrinking everything, densifying it, again, we're losing a lot of the greenery. We're not having the green space that we need. Thank you.
Thank you. So, anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? Second on the agenda. First call, second call, third and final call. Next bylaw, Madam Clerk?
Is Heritage Revitalization bylaw 18409. The address is 2854 O'Hara Lane. The applicant is Elizabeth McDonald, and she is entering into a heritage revitalization agreement in order to allow for a coach house in additions to the Heritage Cobblestones
I have one person who is opposed to this bylaw, but I have no one wishing to speak to it. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this bylaw? Yes, sir. Name and address for the clerk, please.
Good evening, your worship, members of council. Eric Patterson, Patterson Architecture, 810 Key Side Drive, New Westminster. I'm architect for the project before you tonight. I just want to reiterate, this is a very worthwhile heritage project for the Crescent Beach neighborhood. Cobblestones was built in 1918 during the first cohort of cottages down on the beach. It survived fairly good shape up to the present day, and we've done a very extensive research on it and conservation plan to outline the work to be done to the house. Part of the heritage incentive to encourage this sort of restoration project includes the secondary suite that would normally be allowed in a house, in this case will be in the coach house instead, so the coach house will be a standalone building to support the main house. The house is also getting a couple of minor additions to it. Often you see with these kind of projects, the need for current lifestyle updates, so these little additions will accommodate a new kitchen and things like that. Certainly available if there's any questions from council, but I look forward to your support for this worthwhile project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? First call, second call? Wish to speak to this bylaw, sir? Wish to speak to this bylaw, sir? Your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Fahy, F-A-H-Y. My address in Crescent Beach is 2848 O'Hara Lane. May I proceed?
Yes, of course, sir, yes.
Madam Mayor, councilors, I'm here to comment on the bylaw for the adjacent property to mine at Crescent Beach. I say basically I'm in favor of heritage retention and in favor of the majority of the aspects of the bylaw. I am concerned about two things, the parking on the site and the impact of it on visitors to the beach for parking areas. There are currently four cars in the parking area of the subject property. There's a coach house application. Presumably that's not confined to single family, but it could be to another family that would perhaps occupy it with the need for cars in that area, which would be two, would make a total of six. The provision for parking in the property as reconstructed is three. So there's an excess of three cars that are going to have to find parking on Alexander or McBride, which are adjacent streets. Those are streets that are used for the residents and also for visitors who come to visit on the beach. So that's my prime concern, and perhaps it would be important to point out that there is an area, is an element of congestion in the area. The O'Hara Lane is really not a lane, it's a street servicing the properties that face the beach. And it is a very narrow lane, one that two cars cannot move together or come, go down the lane together. It's a one-car lane. It's enough to get a fire truck down, but that's about it. My other concern, other than the parking, is the fire situation. I am surprised that the fire department is in agreement with the bylaw. They will have some concern, I think, in getting access to the front of the house should there be a fire in the, in the front of the house on the beach side. They've got to move through the coach house area, through a fence, I presume that's going to be in there, and then get to the front of the house, having first got onto a, hooked onto a hydrant, which is on McBride. So it's not an easy situation to get to, and I'm just a little bit concerned about the fire situation. The other aspect of the application that concerns me a little bit is how the council or the municipality will deal with other applications that may come forward for coach house installations on other parts of the O'Hara Lane. If there are several or multi-coach houses established on O'Hara Lane, it's going to be a significant congestion on the, on the lane. That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? First call? Is there anyone after this gentleman? You, sir, are the final speaker.
Thank you, Madam Counsel. My name is Kevin McDonald. I'm a resident of the house and married to the property owner. I appreciate this person's concerns, but I don't, if he's aware that there is an existing garage that's going to be taken down, and then we'll gain, we'll have, I think we've got three parking spots now, we'll actually pick up one parking, or one parking spot. So we'll have two on the outside and two in the garage, so there'll be less congestion. In regards to the fire trucks in the front of the property, that does not change anything, accesses to the alley that goes straight to the beach onto the front of the property. I think what we're trying to do here is keep a house with a lot of historical history in, in the area, and our concession regarding the, the coach house is making this project a viable project. So we're hoping for council's approval or support on this. Thank you.
Thank you for your clarification. Next bylaw, Madam Clerk? Is zoning amendment bylaw 18408. The address is 1568 516A Avenue and a portion of the lane. The applicants are Jasdev Jawanda, Harminder Jawanda, and Raj Veer Shergoth. The applicant is seeking to rezone the site from one-acre residential to single-family residential in order to allow subdivision into four single-family lots. And again, I have no one signed up to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number four on the agenda? Yes, sir. Please give your name and address for the record.
My name is Bob Yuan. I'm living in 15686 107th Avenue. Actually, that plan is just behind our house. We just have some general concerns and questions, and say, for example, like, because the construction will be having a direct impact on our life, because it's just behind our house, we are wondering, some questions like when we start and when we're finished, or then the duration of the construction, and the noise, and some dust or contents that are getting in the air. And especially this school just beside, just beside Jas's side of the street, and the kids going to school all the time. And so I'm just wondering, this kind of things, how this, this will be dealt with, or make any enrichment or accommodate that? And especially like the construction, how early we start and how late we stay, because this will have a...
We'll just clarify that for you right now, in terms of what our construction time allowances are under the bylaw. Could respond to that?
Yeah, this is my possible, thank you.
Mr. Planner? Mr. Lamontagne?
Madam Mayor, do you, go ahead. Madam Mayor, if I recall the noise bylaw correctly, I believe it's Monday to Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. at night. And I believe it's similar on Saturdays.
And perhaps we could just speak directly with the delegation at some point in time if this is approved, in terms of what the construction schedule would look like?
Madam Mayor, we could certainly have the developer's contractor provide the notification to the delegation.
Okay, thank you. So anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? Okay.
My name is Michelle Lu at the 15686 107th Avenue. This law is behind my property, and I know on the 1157, and in this area, we have the very limited parking space. So I don't know the full property, does it include rental space? How can they, so far about, how can they arrange for the tenant the parking? Because in our area, as my husband just mentioned, there is elementary school. In the morning and afternoon, after school, this was suffering, you know, the parents and the student, suffering for cross-streets, suffering for the parking space, for the kids' safety. And also another thing is that on this law, have lots of big tree. So how can they deal with the tree? They're going to cut the tree or keep the tree? Because the tree right now, this property is, look like it's only have the one tenant there, no keeper take care of. The deadline is fly to my property, I keep digging, you know, the way to control that works. And for the tree, push the fly to our roof. So I don't know, if they do the construction, so how can they do? Because it's full property, maybe it take, the only one sold it right now, they're going to apply the building permit. Totally full lot, I don't know take how long, maybe two years, we're going to suffering the noisy, the dusty, you know, something. And also the law's control, the officer just said, from morning to the 10 o'clock at evening, including, including Saturday. So this is a residential area, I think it's not, it's hard to us to tolerate this one.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? First call, second call, third and final call. Bylaw number five, please, Madam Clerk? Is zoning amendment bylaw 18411. The address is 14022 and 14050 60th Avenue. The applicant is Satpaul Ball, Satnam Ayula Narinder Garcha. The applicant is seeking to rezone the site from one-acre residential to single-family residential 10 in order to allow subdivision into 16 single-family lots and one remainder portion for future development. Anyone wishing to speak to this bylaw number five? Deb?
Deb Jacks, Surrey Environmental Partners, 7680 143th Street here in Surrey. Council may recall, at the time of the ecosystem management study, Surrey Environmental Partners expressed concern about what was going to be happening with the hubs and sites on what's generally understood or could be understood as the hill that's bounded by King George 64, 152, and Number 10. But I'm speaking most specifically to the northern half of that hill area, perhaps even more than that, maybe three-quarters. We've lost a huge amount of our canopy. Certainly, the hubs that were there are gone, and the residue, which we might have thought would be sites, are mostly all gone, and it looks as if they're going to continue to disappear. What's going to happen here is that the proposal is 67 trees to be removed, actually there's 71 in total, because there are four alder. In replacement, however, there will be no trees, there isn't space. So what the applicant is proposed to be paying is going to be $25,800. However, if we take the number of trees that are going to be killed off and ascribe to them the amount $300 per tree, then we come actually to a total of $41,400. The difference is provided for by the fact that $15,000 per acre is allowed in compensation. Council will recall that in our submission to Finance Committee, we indicated at that time that we felt that that amount of $300 per tree that is lost was insufficient, so that that makes the situation even more of concern. That means, of course, that we have a green fund with lesser amounts of money to be able to be planting trees and providing us with a canopy in the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments on that, Deb. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Counsel. I'm Teresa Roll, I'm with H Y Engineering, and we represent the owner applicant for this project. As you're aware, our proposal includes 16 RF-10 lots, small lots in the South Newton MCP.
Could you put that mic just a little bit closer to you, please? We can't hear you.
We've been involved in a number of applications in the area, and we're very familiar with the development in South Newton. We've been working with the city staff for quite some time on this application, in order to address the requirements for conceptual lot layout, lot consolidation, and the cost-sharing requirements for 141 Street. We believe our proposal and our future concepts of lot consolidation and cost-sharing in the immediate area have met the request of city staff and have provided an amenable solution for all parties involved and is in keeping with the South Newton MCP. Further, we feel our proposal will provide for a positive contribution to the neighborhood. Thank you, and if you have any questions, I can address them.
I see no questions, thank you. That concludes the public, oh, is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? And after you, sir, is there anyone else? All right, we'll...
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
My name is Peter Stolting, 5964 140.
Now, could you raise the mic?
My name is Peter Stolting, 5964 140 Street. Could you put the other plan up again, please? That's pretty helpful. My residence is the lower corner, off to the, off to the left. That's the one, yeah, so that's my place there. I don't really oppose the layout as it is. I'm just here to let council know, I've already gone over this with the planning department, and they say it all conforms. But the point I would like to make, the way my property is proposed to future development, three lots, RF-10s, that will never happen. It just doesn't make any economic sense. The house that we're in now, it's fairly new, and it would require the bulldozing of that house, which isn't necessary. And like I said, to bulldoze the house and split it into three lots is not going to happen in the foreseeable future. The other three lots, I can't speak for them, and that's two lots there, so it will not happen there either. So the point I want to make is, the way it's drawn up will never happen. And if Surrey's happy with that planning and said that's, that's conforms, I don't agree with it. So that lane that's proposed to go through, that will never happen in the foreseeable future. The temporary access on lot number 15 will be a permanent access onto 60th. And to me, it's kind of bad, short-sighted planning, and I just want to go on the record as saying I don't, don't agree with that.
Thank you for your comments. And I think there's another gentleman, yes?
Yes, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak here. I just have a very simple question.
Could you have, give your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, I will. Terry Cholowsky, last name C-H-O-L-O-W-S-K-I.
Thank you, sir.
And I live at 5957 140th Street, just across the street from my longtime neighbor, Peter Stolting. My question here, a simple one, on this application, which we're talking about, the report here, on one of the pages, it states extending 200-millimeter water main on 59A Avenue and tie-in to the existing main on 140th Street. That sounds logical. And then construct a sanitary sewer as required, including construction of fronted sewings of a sanitary, extension of a sanitary sewer on 140th Street, up to the nearest tie-in points. My simple question is, can you, someone here, update me with the status on the sewer project on 140th Street? What's the status right now?
Well, let's see if the engineer can, or if it's particularly in relative to this application. Mr. Engineer?
Madam Mayor, this development application, if it receives third reading, it will be required to provide a design for the sanitary sewer extension that's going to be constructed along 59A Avenue that extends out to 140th Street, as well as going north, which I believe the tie-in point would be at 60th Avenue.
My question is, what's the status of the sewer project on 140th Street, going north and south? Because this project is dependent on tying into 140th Street sewer project. So what's the status project, what's the status of the 140th Street situation? It doesn't, not exist right now.
Mr. Engineer?
Madam Mayor, there is an application that is in process at this point, that will be constructing the sewer along 140th Street, north of 60th Avenue. So that sewer will need to be completed before this application can tie into the system.
So this application would not proceed under the servicing agreement portion of it until it's able to... it until it's able to proceed relative to something going on on 140th Street? Is that correct?
That's correct. Once the other project has completed construction of that sewer, then this project...
Only then could this project proceed with servicing?
Yes.
Is there a timeframe just for us, people in the neighborhood, so we know?
Madam Mayor, I do not have that schedule at this point, but I can certainly contact the delegation and advise them of that schedule.
Through... Okay. And that one... The other... The project upon which this is contingent has yet to come before this council?
Madam Mayor, I believe that servicing is underway at this point. I just don't have the actual construction schedule.
Okay. Perhaps you could get...
And I can certainly call the delegation about that.
Perhaps you could speak directly with the delegation to get the more definitive timeline for you, sir?
Okay. As residents, how can we find this information out?
The engineers go to speak with you and give you that information.
By telephone or email, or how?
If you leave your contact... We have your contact number. We'll... You'll speak to him directly. Okay.
Okay, I'll give him my contact right now.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? First call, second call. This is the third and final call for this bylaw. That ends the public hearing portion of this agenda. Moving on to committee reports. Counselor Hane.
Move the minutes of the Investment and Innovation Committee for October 6th.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Please be received, Police Committee, October 6th.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Social Policy.
I'll move the recommendation and receive the minutes, please.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Agriculture, Food Security.
I'll move the minutes to be received.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Public Art.
I'll move the minutes of the Public Art Advisory Committee.
Second.
Second. Madam Mayor, may I just mention one activity along with those minutes? That we're having a series of public art talk by artists, and there'll be two this year. And the first one coming up is actually on March 5th, and it's at the Surrey Central Library. It's free from 7:00 to 8:30, and it's the Value of Public Art in Cities. And our artist-in-residence at the Works Yard, Owen Story, will be giving that talk. So I think it'll be very interesting for the community.
Good. I'll call the question on minutes. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Culture Development Advisory.
The Cultural Development Advisory Committee minutes. Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
I just have one comment on those, because I think it's really important, because we have supported our Surrey Youth Orchestra. And on Saturday, in this environment, in this theater here, and in the library, at 2:00 PM, the Surrey Youth Orchestra will be playing, and they're doing world premiere by artist and composer Jordan Nobles called Space and Time. And it's a free public concert so that people in the community can enjoy our youth orchestra.
Right here in our own chamber.
That's right.
Thank you. Moving on to Boards and Commissions, Board of Variants.
Move minutes be received.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. And I have two proclamations. One is the World Down Syndrome Day, whereas World Down Syndrome Day is a global awareness day which has been officially observed by the United Nations since 2012, and whereas one in every 700 babies born in Canada today has Down Syndrome, and whereas there are currently over 40,000 Canadian citizens who have Down Syndrome. Whereas the City of Surrey values our citizens with Down Syndrome and their families, now therefore be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare March 21, 2015 as World Down Syndrome Day in the City of Surrey. And I have a proclamation for Anti-Bullying Day, whereas the day of February 25 has been recognized by the City of Surrey as Anti-Bullying Day, and in recognition thereof, citizens, businesses, and organizations throughout the city will be encouraged to also recognize the day. And whereas bullying is physical, verbal, or emotional harm, or intimidation intentionally directed at a person or group of people, and whereas bullying is a universal problem that occurs in neighborhoods, in playgrounds, in schools, and throughout technology, and whereas various researchers have concluded that bullying is the most common form of violence affecting millions of children and adolescents annually, now therefore be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare February 25, 2015, Anti-Bullying Day in the City of Surrey. Please wear pink that day. Moving on to Corporate Reports, the 026 we did earlier in the evening with the Sustainability Charter and 027 Innovation Boulevard. Could I have someone move the recommendation on the renewal of the Cloverdale Business Improvement Area?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Corporate Report R029, Closure and Sale of Portion of Zero Avenue Between 176A Street and 177A Streets.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Corporate Report R030, Sale of City-Owned Property at 18954 54 Avenue.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Corporate Report R031, Amendment to the Fraser Sewage Area Boundary.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Corporate Report R032, The Word of Contract for Barnes &amp; Drive Improvements.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Corporate Report R033, License Agreement Rogers Communication Partnership for Use of Road Allowances.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Corporate Report R034, Closure of Road Adjacent to 15815 and 15825 1058 Avenue.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Corporate Report R036, Bylaw Enforcement Activities Report for Fourth Quarter of 2014.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Corporate Report R037, Proposed Music Festival at Holland Park.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Business Rising, Number One. Move H1. Move third on H1.
Second.
Yes, Counselor Villanueva.
I'm just... I know that several times tonight, when we were dealing with industrial buildings, that there was the mention from... About the green roofs and green walls and various things. And I know that we have... We're just going through the review on a sustainability charter, and possibly it'd be good to look at a policy that really tries to sincerely and proactively address the idea of the green roofs and green walls, and what financial implications that might have for the business owner, but in the value of the city and whether part of our green fund, we might have to partner on something like that. But I think the time has come, and considering the amount of industrial development that is taking place in the city and will continue, I think that there's great take-up for our industrial project lands that to incorporate the green roofs and walls might be a really innovative thing to start looking at over the next few years.
Perhaps you could put that on Assured Safe Session. That sounds like an issue for broader discussion. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll call the question. All those in favor, third on that bylaw. Opposed, carried.
On the zoning on Number One as well, move third.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On Number Two, move third.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Yes, Counselor Gill.
Madam Mayor, just in terms of this particular site, I do agree with the direction that we're heading on, but I know that the theme of parking continues to come up. Just moving forward, in terms of trying to quantify any relaxations when it relates to parking, I really would like to be able to kind of maybe look at having staff, maybe bring something to Transportation Committee in the future that would help us, having a third party, support the application in terms of any significant variances as it relates to parking reductions. So again, this application that we just approved had, I believe, thirty-four parking stalls less than what the bylaw suggested. So what I'm trying to articulate is that should there be a significant percentage that is deviating from the bylaw, that in fact we have that articulated from a traffic engineer.
Put on the agenda of Transportation Committee?
Yeah. Thank you.
Moving on to bylaw number three.
Move third on three.
Second.
Yes, Counselor Villanueva.
I just want to support this project of the pleasure of living in Crescent Beach, and this is one of the most beautiful homes on the beachfront cobblestone. And I think it's an innovative way to ensure that we can maintain it on the level that it has been maintained, but certainly because of the age, it will start having its creaks and pains if it doesn't have the renovations it needs. And I think that the description of the parking on how it's going to handle that is valid. And certainly O'Hara Lane is congested, but there isn't parking on the lane. So if a number of those coach houses start appearing, we'll have to reconsider how we're going to handle parking issues, but I'm sure it can be adequately handled on this site, because I walk that lane.
Yeah. In this particular case, it seems like the parking will be better dealt with as opposed to how it currently exists.
Exactly.
Yeah. Call the question on third. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third on four.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third on five.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. And could we make sure we connect with that one speaker that was concerned about the 140th Street? Thank you. Moving on to permit, six. Move Development Variance Permit on Number Six.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Move the Development Variance Permit on Number Seven.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. And same with Number Eight.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. And development permit be approved on Number Eight. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Number Nine, Development Permit, Variance Permit.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. And also the permit, Development Permit. All those in favor, opposed, carried. And at the finals? Finals on Number Ten.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Are there any... And on Eleven, are there any persons wishing to make representations on this bylaw? It is a bylaw to close a portion of road on 10154, 10164, 139 Street. First call, second call, third and final call. Move final adoption. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Move final on Twelve.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Move final on Thirteen.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Move final on Fourteen.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Move final on Fifteen.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. On Number Sixteen, move introduction.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Move first.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Move second.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. The public hearing set for March 23rd.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Delegation requests.
I'm going to move that delegation A up here at CIC. Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And I'll move the delegation of Anne Murray and Vancouver Airport Authority to CIC.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Parking patroler appointments. Move the recommendation.
Second.
Q, all those in favor, opposed, carried. On Number Three, acting mayor appointments. Move the recommendation.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Any notices of motion? Any other business?
Madam Mayor.
Oh. Other business?
Yes.
Yes?
Thank you. I just... I tabled on, for all the council members, a motion regarding the railway issue. And Eric Sees, who's the president of the Detroit Payers, has had a conversation with myself and Mayor Hepner on the issues. And I just want to read the motion, and we have had discussion about the fact that the train has stalled, cutting off the access negra to Crescent Beach a few times. And the suggestion by the ratepayers, I think, is very valid, and they're hoping that this city council supports this motion so that they can give its strength going to our MPs and Transport Canada. So it says, and it's a little bit long, but I think it's worth reading, that freight traffic on the BNSF rail line along the Boundary Bay foreshore has increased nearly fourfold since 2007 with longer and heavier trains. And northbound freight trains marshaled by multiple engines break within Crescent Beach to reduce speed before crossing the Nickamekko Railway Bridge, which is tenuous as is. And southbound engines accelerate within Crescent Beach after crossing the bridge. So on January 5th, January 2015, at 1:45 AM, a fallen tree from the slope on the south Crescent Beach curve causes the northbound coal train to engage undesired emergency brake application, blocking all accesses to and from Crescent Beach for four hours. And on the 27th of December 2014, at 10:15 PM, a knuckle failure on the south Crescent Beach curve causes the northbound mixed freight train to split and idle within the community for ninety minutes while being put back together. And on June 26, 2014, 7:15 AM, a knuckle failure on the south Crescent Beach curve caused a northbound mixed freight train to split and engage UDE, blocking all access to and from Crescent Beach for forty-five minutes. And on August 2nd, 2014, 9:35 PM, a knuckle failure on the south Crescent Beach curve caused a northbound unit coal train to split and engage UDE, blocking all access to and from Crescent Beach for ten minutes at the Beecher Street Crossing and for three hours at the McBride Street Crossing. And in 2007, a train engaged UDI emergency brake conditions, stopping the train and blocking both intersections. And BNSF explanation to Surrey Mayor and Council at that time in a July 2010 report was that such failure occur approximately once per year, system-wide throughout North America, with the probability of this happening again at this location being very remote. That was in 2007 that statement was made, and I just detailed that four or five incidents where it failed and blocked the crossing. So the motion is that the existing Nickamekko Railway Swing Bridge freight speed restriction be extended south of Crescent Beach to the 24th Avenue stairs. So in otherwise... In other words, they want the train to start slowing before it enters the Crescent Beach area so that it's going at one consistent speed, so they're not dealing with the knuckling on the rail at this time. So I'd like to put that motion forward, and Madam Mayor, you might have a comment about it as well. If somebody would like to...
Second.
Thank you. And thank you for putting that together, particularly the work. I want to acknowledge the work of Mr. Seitz with the Crescent Beach Community Association because he's done some amazing work and in a very methodical and sensible way. I've used his information. I used it at the Big City Mayor's Caucus recently when we discussed rail safety, and I've used it several times. I actually met with BNSF and also used it. So they're well aware that we're looking for that kind of slowdown. So I think doing it in a formal fashion and making it a resolution here this evening will only assist us in our pursuit of that slowdown and... I know that they're spending some infrastructure dollars on that Tressel Bridge. They said that to me at my most recent meeting, but I think this is really timely to put this in front of them, that these knuckle failures happen many more times than they suggest that they should, especially when they say it's more in North America.
Yes.
And we can list it half a dozen times when it happens just in Crescent Beach. So I'm very supportive of this resolution. I thank you for bringing that. I'm going to call the question on it. All those in favor, opposed, carried. And Counselor Gill?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one item. The public hearing on zoning amendment bylaw 18399, that was to reduce the enclosed tandem parking in order to provide more living space for nine units in an eighteen-unit development, was held on February 2nd, 2015. Later in the meeting, third reading of bylaw 1... Later in the meeting, third reading of by law 18399 was defeated by council. I'm submitting the following notice of motion. That council requests staff to prepare a subsequent report to address the concerns raised at the public hearing held on February 2nd, 2015, in order for council to reconsider third reading of zoning amendment by law 18399.
Thank you. Is that in order? Yes, it is. I could do that. Okay. Seconder? Do I have a seconder?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of bringing that back with information from staff? Okay. Opposed? And that's carried. Thank you, Counselor. Is there any other business? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.